We have a form of Adam, clerk, will you please call the robe?
Harry Adams.
Here.
Brittany Branham.
Here.
Shag Branham.
Here.
David Gerhardt.
Here.
Mike LaFerty.
Here.
BD Menery. Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Don Douglas.
Here.
We're gonna try to conduct business as quickly as we can because Don has to leave.
Sorry.
Alright, we understand why, so we'll go through the agenda quickly, invocation, my bowels.
Sure. Alright, God, thank you for this opportunity to be here this evening, thank you for safety and travels, um, thank you for who you are, thank you for your son, Jesus, pray that, um, we trust in doing the decisions that are made here tonight, that we will refer you in whatever we do, in your name, amen.
Amen.
Very good, but quick. Everybody please flag, take your hands up, please, we want to do the national, the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of bills?
Salute.
I have a motion, take a second, now a second, all favor.
Aye.
All opposed. I will note that the bills are made available throughout the day, anytime anybody wants to come look at them, the more of them come look at any bills than we have, you know, and checks are payable. The approval of the minutes for six eighteen eighteen, seven twelve eighteen, and eight nine eighteen minutes. I got a motion, take a second, I have a second, all favor.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Eyes happy, we'll move on to the visitors. Now, I want to talk to some of our visitors here, we'd like to welcome the press, and that would be Mary and Patrick, and to Mike Campbell, City Utilities, we have Denise Thomas from Denise, are we doing anything to you today? Just checking us.
Just, just.
I didn't see it on there, I was right there.
I appreciate that.
And we have three gentlemen of perfection, you all have seen them two or three times, they come out and saw us early today, and we'll be talking about them just later on. But, real quick before we get started, Mike, anything special today?
My wife's birthday.
Your wife's birthday, can you say happy birthday?
You can, Matt.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, if you're afraid of her, I'm afraid of her, so, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Now, she's gonna hate us both forever. Just when he won, they, uh, time to go.
Good save.
Uh, the truth, please.
Alright, real quick, we have Carrie Davis here, and Carrie has a program called Green Dot. Green Dot is a, um, it's a violence, it's a city, for a city to become a Green Dot city, and it's a violence-related program, and she's gonna give us a quick overview of it, and if you guys approve, then we will get a proclamation together, and send a proclamation that we want to become a Green Dot city.
Okay, and just real quick, and like Mayor Stapleton stated, I am the outreach educator for Mount Oregon's of Care Center, who, um, I work with the Hilling Department, and we work with the Kentucky Assault, Sexual Assault Program, with, um, people who are sexually assaulted, and this program is a program that tries to intervene when someone sees a violent act take place. And I really wanted to reach out to Christiansburg City to incorporate this, because I think it would be a wonderful opportunity for the city to, um, be a part of this, not only would we be the second city on the side of Kentucky, the, to be implementing this program, but it would also hopefully decrease some violent actions that occur in the city, so. And when we look at the map of Christiansburg, we look at it, and, um, anytime there is a violent behavior that is committed, that is considered a red dot, and, um, so, when you talk about green dots, we try to neutralize those red dots, and I can work with like the fire department, and police officers, and any council members, and community members, and give them strategies to reach out, to, um, incorporate if they see a violent behavior, and they can, uh, you know, approach indirectly, or they can delegate, which would mean that they would call the police department, or they can do like a distraction to kind of neutralize the situation, depending on what they feel comfortable with. And, so, that's just like a brief overview about what the program is, and I have like a packet, I think, put together for you guys, if you want to look at it more. The other city who has started the implementation of Green Dot is, um, Maysville, and there are some pictures of Maysville City, and we will purchase flags that would look similar to those that are in our packet, and it would just note, "Welcome to Christiansburg, Green Dot City." And I thought that it would be a perfect opportunity to launch this during the Genie Wally Festival, and I would have like a table that would, we would set up, and I have swag that I can give out, and, and talk to people about the program, and, um, at that time, give them strategies that they could use, you know, to hopefully implement whenever they approach, you know, unfortunately, a violent situation. And we're working with Floyd County Schools to also get this into the high schools, um, they have it at University of Kentucky and Eastern Kentucky University, and I just think it would be a great program to start, so, any questions?
I've got a couple comments, after you kind of talked to me about, you also discussed that you all will be doing some training.
Right.
And that eventually training will be made up, well, to the fire department, to the police officers, very specific training in this deal.
Right.
And this isn't just sexual assault, it is violence in general.
Yes, any violent behavior that you see occur. And we, um, reach out to the schools, we talk about bullying, and it's an anti-violence, anti-bullying, um, sexual assault, dating violence, um, stalking, any type of violence, and, um, you know, we see, unfortunately, on the TV every day about how people aren't sexually assaulted, you know, anywhere. So, it's just kind of work with everybody to make them more aware of what violence is, and, um, what sexual violence is, and what domestic violence is.
Now, coming out to the bone, there is gonna be some grant monies coming up, eventually.
Okay.
I already checked into it, eventually, there will be grant monies coming up, there will be some advantages to being in Green Dot community, because of the recent educational grants and stuff.
That's great.
That will assist our departments.
Okay, and once we like do the, um, you know, the jump start at Genie Wally Festival, then I'll do like, I'll set up maybe, um, at the Mount Mart Center, and, you know, do like a public forum where anyone in the city of Christiansburg, or anyone in Floyd County who would want to come, and I would go over like a small presentation with them as well. Um, and then Mayor Stapleton and I have been asked to present, um, in November for a conference with the Kentucky Assault Association Program, so I think that that's, you know, very, very positive for our community.
Wasn't that a conference, can I, on the first stake, to actually roll this program out?
Um, in the Region 11, yes, yeah.
I was on the board, but it first came out about seven years ago, six, seven?
And unfortunately, it kind of went dormant, and it kind of went through a couple of hands, and so, hopefully, with my retirement through education, uh, and now I can, you know, get this program moving in a positive direction, so that's my hope.
So, the question is, I guess, uh, do we want to come, as the city, do we want to come to Green Dot City?
I don't see any downside to it at all.
I don't either, I think we should.
Make the motion.
I'll say.
I'll say.
I got a motion and a second, all favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
You give me a proclamation already, get them to the station, get them pretty favor, and we'll sign it. If you're gonna, if you're gonna really open up and go out at the Genie Wally Festival, which is in October, at the September meeting, we'll do the proclamation here in front of the council, so the council's here willing to say, is that okay?
Okay.
How many, how many flags are we looking at?
Um, I think I've, um, I've budgeted for 12, and I thought, like I talked to Mayor Stapleton, that we could get them with every entrance into Christiansburg, um, first and foremost, and then like the main street, have a couple on there, and then, um, like they're going up to Billy Ray's, and anywhere else that you all could think of that we might want to hang those. And we can always get more, but that's what I budgeted for at the beginning.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, any other visitors want to speak, Steve?
I'm good.
Jan? Well, I want to thank y'all for getting here, I didn't mention Steve and Jan there while I was here. Steve and Jan, Steve obviously runs the, uh, the planetarium, and I got a right on our planetarium, it is the most, the number one most technologically advanced planetarium in the nation. You get to correct me on that quite often.
It's a mouthful, so it's like.
Well, you know, right here in Floyd County, that's, uh, here in Christiansburg, it's, that's pretty impressive that we have that, that's pretty impressive that we have. Alright, no visitors want to speak, you know, oh, Patrick?
I just want to remind you all that we have the Battle of Middle Creek coming up on the 7th, 8th, and 9th of September.
I'm getting my dress clean.
I like to hear that.
And Patrick has a nice haircut, did he?
I do.
He has a haircut, I noticed that.
Thank you for noticing, I appreciate it.
Mary, anybody else, any visitors? Alright, uh, we need to discuss now, uh, doing unfinished business, we have two, one is the second reading ordinance number 12 days, 2018, there's the ordinance where we were going to, uh, we need to table this right now, reason being, I've been contacted by the Utility Commission and their attorney, and they would like to change a couple more sections in that ordinance, there's no use us tweaking it to that and dragging it out for, uh, three or four meetings, let's get them, let's get them right the next time, and we'll go ahead and make it up next time. I do the motion and the table. I have a motion, you have a second.
Second.
I have a second, all favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And as soon as we can get these other changes made on the ordinance that they, that they would like to see, we'll, uh, we'll get this up before our next meeting, or the special college, whatever. Any other unfinished business? Alright, do business, right away for signage, uh, because there's gonna be some negotiations that have to go forward in that, I need to discuss that with you all, it's future business, and it's negotiations that if they went public right now, could affect whether or not we'll be able to pull this, uh, project together, uh, so we will need to have a, during the executive session, it's got to do with real estate, basically, we need it right away, so, uh, we'll need to do an executive session number 61, 81, O, subsection 1, subsection B, later, not right now, and discuss this, and we will come out with, uh, either a yea or nay on it. Number two is utility commission appointments, obviously, we're not gonna finish the second reading on that yet, the utility commission appointment will wait, and we'll take care of those at the same time we do that, if y'all have any other, um, suggestion or point these other one we discussed last time, please let me know. Air evac renewal, this is something I do every year about this time, but air evac renewal, it's a program where basically the city pays just under fifteen thousand dollars, and anybody that is inside the city of Christiansburg will not be charged any more than what their interns pay if they have to be flown out. We actually pushed it to the form where, please correct me if I'm wrong, it covers five counties for us right now, is that correct? Is that it, Mike?
Yes.
We got John's Florida, we got, we took Floyd and all the surroundings, it'll cover any Christiansburg citizen, and it won't cost them, you know, it's from a hospital to another hospital, that's, uh, if you're out here in a car wreck, and it's come from scene, get you, get sick.
Mountain bike accident.
Mountain bike accidents. Yeah, and they're actually really close there, so that works out pretty good. So, uh, personally, I think it's been a, a good product for us, because it has alleviated a lot of expenses from some citizens, that.
What's been the utilization? What's been the utilization?
That may, we had.
My company, we had blown out a few oil from there.
There, huh?
I know last year, there was seven, there was seven doctors there.
Yeah, I would say somewhere close to around 12, somewhere along through there.
Well, this past year?
It's our top manager.
You said, you said 12 total, or 12 of last year?
I, I would say somewhere between 10 to 12 in the last year. Yes.
That, since they have moved up on the hill, there's been a lot more, uh, prevailing, getting out, getting some of our, our people at the, at the scenes, makes a difference.
We'll make a motion, will we, uh, do it again?
I have a motion, it's second, discussion.
Will they still offer that hundred and eighty-five dollar program?
I think it's cheaper. This time of the state, you don't like the one from the whole nation?
Oh, great.
I think it's, I think it's back up to hundred and eighty-five.
Oh, is it?
Yes.
Okay.
They took your rates this year.
It does, it went down, went up, so.
It's still cheap.
But it is, it's a national program, that's, that's, in order they pick you up at, in the state, in the United States.
Would that for like three years, hundred and eighty-five for three years, or something like that?
I think that was, the original one was for three years.
Yeah, that's three.
I think you are correct.
Annual rate is forty-five.
Yeah, annual rate is about that.
That's for the upgrade.
What is it if you're not floating straight out? What's the cost?
I think it's eighty-nine dollars, I think, per person, I mean, per household, like there's anybody in your household.
Yeah, I guess because we're brothers, partner, and you get the cheaper, kind of, part of the price.
But the point is, for eighty-nine dollars, you provide yourself, and the city doesn't have to. And I was wondering if we need to start buying, helping people with their ambulance service also, since we're doing the helicopter, do we need to do the ambulance service too?
If we ever have a service to offer this deal like this, I think we might have to look at it.
But I believe this is a certificate of need, is it?
Yeah.
And ambulance services is a certificate of need, basically, isn't it?
If it's not a program, not better than not to wear an ambulance service.
But I mean, in order to operate an ambulance service, you have to have a certificate of need.
Yeah.
In order to offer, offer airman care, you do not, or you're not required to have a certificate of need, so that's a little bit different. Certificate of needs are much that you have to prove to the state that you have the, the need that's presented to people to utilize.
But you don't really have to know this.
It's what I'm saying, it's, it's, they're two different things, couldn't do handles, whereas this you can, because it's not a certificate of need, basically. That ain't about to do it, you told me. Okay, you're saying, but you said that you could be doing it for ambulance service. I asked if it was off, because I don't think, I don't know where you draw the line on what we do, and I've never been towards this, I'm, I'm glad it's here, but for eighty-nine dollars, you'd not say, and I don't know why it's.
Eighty-nine dollars a year?
That's what you said, well, I understood.
No. How much is it a year?
I think it's eighty-nine dollars, I think.
A year?
I think, I'm not sure, can't remember at all, I think that's right.
Who's your asking?
No.
Can't remember.
Last I, last I remembered, it was like one eighty-five for three years, I'm not for sure, it's been.
That was for the upgrade.
That was for state upgrade.
For us to be, we're already in the city of Christiansburg, we're under this program, which will do the upgrades where they cover us for proclamation.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure something out.
I'm wishing my calculator, I can't put my head.
You got thirty-five hundred people's population, is it a household or a buy?
A house, a house.
A household, okay, that changes something there.
Well, he's thinking way too hard.
Yes, yes.
Because I follow this. There's a difference. He was talking about, yeah, but.
Here, here, each household have a hay, a little bit substantial, like a mow, eighty-nine dollars, and what we have, fourteen. You have to, you know, I got my vice, either I have my vice, I don't have my. Do you want my chairs?
Full coverage for only two-hundred-and-nineteen dollars.
Are you, for a household or for a person?
Putting too much pressure on your family. Protect your family, two-nineteen, it must have gone out. Clayton, eleven. Settle the meter, isn't it?
Not today, they didn't know. That's, uh, we got about fourteen-hundred-and-eighty-five.
Twenty-four cents a household.
How much?
Seven, seventy-two dollars, seven, you need two bucks a household?
No, if it's two-hundred-and-nineteen, oh, you don't pay, we pay it.
If we pay it?
Yeah. Yes, it does, Rose Nurse, my, my seventy bucks is good.
Why don't I even get my calculator out, or if you can, right on my left side. I'm impressed.
But that, there's, there's a clue, nurse dollar. She didn't say that.
We got updated number, we talked to the base, it was over twenty.
Over twenty.
In the last year, that, that was used, one, one medic said he himself flew twelve. So, they're over twenties, trying to get some exact number, but he knows they're over twenty.
Any more discussion? All favor? All opposed? Eyes happy? Alright, uh, mutual aid agreement, Blackberry Enterprises, we need to discuss that in the executive session also, for the same reason, sixty-one, eight, one, O, subsection 1, subsection B. And we'll come out of the session with something like that, I need a motion. I have a motion for a second session, it's second.
Second.
All favor? We asked you just for just a couple minutes, discussing business issue, and motion, come out of the session. I have a motion, it's second.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, uh, we have two things we need to work on, we need to do some, uh, we're negotiating on the mutual aid agreement, and we'll take care of that, the right away for signage. I have a motion to discuss that right away, that problem. I have a motion, it's second. Discussion.
Yeah, in my opinion, I think it's a danger, the way that this shows, that we need to come up with a different way, I do like the idea to clear you out, all those, but I think that flashing changing images in the background could be dangerous in the strange section.
Alright, any more discussion?
Do we have other standing votes on this one?
I mean, is, is, is that the only option, do we need to table it, are there other options, or is that our only option?
Well, what I need to do is, I need to go back and ask them, say, can you get it up above the lights, or whatever, see if somebody can throw it away from the lights.
Because right now, all we're doing is, is making an agreement for the city to go in for, uh, property right away.
Yeah.
But the way that this is set up, in order to do that, we need something to, to let us know that this won't be that dangerous that we see it, that it is. And that that way, because they'll have to go to the state, I'm sure, the highway, to see how.
That approved.
And all that, yeah.
Alright. The current plan, where that sign's set right now, do we need to vote or not, or we just table it?
We table it.
I would need a motion to table it, and go back, go back to the locations.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, it's second.
Second.
I have a second, all favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Um, other new business? Anybody else got any other new business right now? If not, you notice in front of you, you have our, uh, two thousand seventeen, two, two thousand eighteen, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, pop-ups?
Yeah, yes.
Revenue and expenses, you'll notice almost all of our departments come in under budget, like management from that, uh, we'd end up with, uh, actual cash surplus.
We did.
But we got some other things we need to do throughout the year, and eat some of it up, but we did end up with, it wasn't gonna be pretty good, very good, but we come up with that much?
Uh, right now, it's, uh, around thirty thousand, and we're good, there's a couple of outstanding grants that we've not received, I have to get the spin before you receive it, um, one for radios and one for repaving, but we're a part, I have not received those back yet, should we do this figure next?
So, that will move us up to about.
To about two hundred.
About two-hundred thousand, but.
In black? Yeah, in black.
Alright, we have any other, any other, oh, well, I, I had to, sorry. But kind of selection here, I don't think it's fair for us to try to tie them, tie any possible future legislators of the city, council, or the males, uh, into a bind, but there is some things we have to get, take care of quickly, the guys from perfection are here, and we're gonna discuss them, of course, you all know, we discuss with them, do this, do that, uh, for us to put them under a bond issue, or put the future, uh, put the future administration in, under any type of bond issue, in the case that we, this council and myself aren't here, I think we need to be very careful about doing that, but what we can do, and we've gotten birds, and basically what we need to do is, they literally have to stand over there and hold the button down, HVAC, at the Mount Mart Center, to keep it operating, Steve Russo, being the thin gentleman that he is, that he doesn't pick him like he does me, but, so.
There have been some nights, we've had a sell-out crowd, and it's so hot.
Yeah.
In the theater, it's cool in the hallway, but it's so hot in the theater.
As a matter of fact.
People are like, oh my God, it's so hot, and then they get the thing, they get the unit working, and it turns into an icebox.
Yeah, yeah, it's sort of.
That's how bad it is, and it's like, people are like freaking out.
It's so polarized right now, the government system is so, and it's huge.
And every time they come out, I don't know how much money it is, but they're calling people constantly to work on.
They've literally been out at least once a week this whole year, outside.
I mean, we, we don't even.
What?
Last couple of years, sixty-seven thousand, just on.
Oh, yeah, just on.
Service calls.
Just on.
I mean, we leave the doors open to the theater, just so we can get some fresh air in, and you should close the doors, I mean, you have light coming in during performances, and.
It takes away some experience.
Yes.
So, uh, as we discuss this with them, and where there's phases, we can do this, and it's still part of our dream initiative that we had, and they got the, uh, right away, we could put this into phases, my suggestion will be that we do phase one, if y'all allow me to start negotiating with them, obviously, I'll come back with, to you all, before we have anything tied down, but we do a phase one to get the fans in place, and the heat cooling done, over there at the Mount Mart Center, before we do the nay.
We, we had a committee that, that, four times, three times?
Yeah.
Three times, and we, we understand it's needed, we understand it's costly, but.
But there's. Under, under different circumstances, I wouldn't say we go ahead and do everything over here at the same time, but under the circumstances right now, it's been election year, I think it's best that we don't, we don't risk a chance of binding a future administration.
What does your board say? Well, they asked.
Oh, that board over there, help. That'll be, literally, that's what they're doing, they have, they have, uh, the MAC has done very well this year, and they've been doing a lot of work on their own, a lot, but this is a very substantial project.
It's, it's substantial, but it's not as substantial as this city hall would, but this city ought to survive a little longer than the MAC can, because of the meats, the types of meats. I just don't want us to, you know, you sit on these boards, and then you come in and get overridden, and they put in time, and I know they're asking for help, and I understand that, but what does the board want?
They want the heat cooling.
I mean, what's your priority, is it the leak, was it the mold, are they gonna need the heating fixed?
They're gonna fix, uh, everything's fixed, except for the heat, the HVAC.
Okay.
They've done, we got the leaks fixed on the roof already, we're very big here in the mold, they've actually painted.
Yeah.
They've painted over all that, the only major problem that they have, right, guys, you can freshen the cracker for rum, what we had there was lighting, heat cooling, and the fan system built, is that, that's pretty much all we had at the MAC.
Mm-hmm, with the building automation system, caught in the canals and stuff.
With a building automation system, tie in the canals and stuff.
Yeah.
The air conditioning unit's been a problem since, well, Keith was there.
We've done a lot of work over there on the way. We've not just, you know, people think that's how we do it, we're just sitting around, obviously, but we've done a lot of work, we fixed the roof, had leaks on it, we've done some landscaping, we had some issues where water actually soaked and backed up to the walls, it was fixed, so we've done a lot of work in there. Right now, the major issue is the heat cooling.
The cost issue.
It's hard, it's hard to invite people, and you say, hey, come watch our show, it's 84 degrees sitting there.
Harry, about three years ago, I was actually inside the air conditioning unit down the back, my finger on the relay button every five minutes to keep it running during the whole show, inside the unit.
And that's a... It's a very exciting city, not to go to do that.
So I wasn't in there.
I'm all for fixing, don't get me wrong, but if you've got people that go over there and spend their time on what the board, on what they wanted, you know, what needs to be done, what their priority was, that's why I was asking.
330.
You know, if you come up with a price, and if that's what they want, you know, help.
Yeah, I want that board too, it's desperate, Abe.
But you see what I'm saying, I don't want to overstep, I mean, I know we have to, but, you know, I don't want to overstep...
We've discussed it by every meeting.
Yeah. Of what they do.
Yeah. I want to help them. I think they understand what you're saying. This is, MAC advisory were 330 tomorrow, if I walk in and say, what's y'all's priority, they're going to say heat cooling. We discuss it every meeting we have. That is the issue. All the other issues that they did have, we break fixed. That's, that's number one issue of them. Everything else. Now, we do have issues with the doors to get ready to work on, we'll be discussing that tomorrow, but as far as the major issues with the Mount Mart Center right now, HVAC and the fan system, to keep the air generator moving the whole time.
You want to give us some prices, come on, show them.
They're going to give me a price.
Yeah.
This is a part of that green energy bill that we did.
I read that.
So they have, they wanted to bid everything on it. All we're doing is taking the group, the one big mass build that they have, and we're breaking it down into phases. And the first phase, my thought is we do the Mount Mart Center. So I need to be able to start negotiating, we'll invite, see what we can do, and then we'll bring a final tally of you guys. I need a motion there, Patrick. Motion. Have a motion in a second. I have a second, all in favor?
All right.
All opposed. Motion adjourned. Have a motion adjourned. Have a second. All in favor? I gotta go. All opposed. Who wants to give me a ride to the house?
I'll give you a ride. This, this is paint, I think you did.
Paint's ready, man.
I'll change it.
I'll take it.